County Highway Commissioner.
Did you hit your tablet, Roy?
He did. He got it.
Sure, so just a quick explanation for the Highway Commissioner, like several other department heads, that we also require is the confirmation of the county board. Obviously, John is retiring. We went through the recruitment process, and I am recommending that we select that Ash as our next Highway Commissioner. And again, it needs your confirmation.
Any questions? By voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Harry? Resolution 2021-17 establishes size of county board to facilitate county supervisor district plan. Want to make a motion? Thank you. Thank you, Nissa.
I have a quick explanation on this one. I need a mic. This explanation on this one in regards to the redistricting process, I said in the memo last week that obviously the census data has gotten postponed all the way to September. But usually, we would be starting up in April with the process. But always to start the process is just the definition or the size of our county board. And again, we were, we had this at admin, and we thought there's no reason to postpone this. But this actually just says that as a county board, we're going to move forward with remaining that 21 supervisors.
Questions or comments? If not, by voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Harry, thank you. Resolution 2021-18, approval of gift, grant, and/or donation for the maintenance and rehabilitation of the Anethy State Trail. Dan?
This is a grant that they're applying for to rehab. Five thousand dollar mark, so we have to have county board approval to accept it if they do get it. It's got to match to get the grant. I don't think we've received the grant yet, have we? Again, we were applying right now, but if we didn't were to get it, that we approved getting it.
Questions? Bob?
Yeah, notionally, what's the plan?
Basically, I think it's for filling in the bottle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, that was my basic question. This is for maintenance, not, there's not a, this isn't for a special project or a special acquisition of land along it or anything, or parking areas. It's just basic maintenance. Thank you.
Any other questions? We will use the voter board for this one. Let's pass on a vote of 18 yes. Three absent. Thank you. Resolution 2021-19, intergovernmental agreement, search and buy their county economic development loan program. Dave Engelbert? Read on and everything. Any questions? By voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution 2021-21, authorization to proceed with, I'm sorry, transfer of non-budgeted funds, highway department facility to support salt brining operations. Dave?
It was a project that came to the, first to the Highway Committee, and then to Airport and the Facilities and Parks Committee, and then to Finance. And it was a recommendation at Highway that the money come from the operating capital that was there and not take it from the money that been allocated towards the crushing operation. So that would stay at the $500,000, and money could come from, from the money in the operating funds that's there. So that was also the recommendation at, at Finance. The amount increased, though, as a result of a recommendation by the administrator and finance director that it go from the $170,000 to $200,000. So it's not to come back for any further requests. I wish there was more information in the packet on this. I had requested it at Highway when it was to come to Finance and then to come here, that we better understand the project because it grew from the $147,000 that the state was giving us for this project. And it's going up, and now I hear there's also even further money needed for, for a wireless connection there. That's what I was told this morning, but I don't. Is there additional work to be done, Dan?
The, I don't know if there's additional work. I mean, they're looking at all the equipment that would operate it. So I'm assuming there's some type of connection far as either wireless or network to the equipment itself that goes back to the main building. But, I mean, it should be, it should be included within the overall costs that we're projecting for this project.
Dan?
Well, I think since we got the man in the audience that knows all those answers, and this is his last time to talk to us, so let him talk.
That'd be you, John.
I, I don't know if I heard the specific question, but the project was mentioned. It's gone through the various committee levels, and we had not originally anticipated to build an addition to our facility out there. We were looking at a, a precast structure that would sit outside after additional studies and evaluating the long-term needs in the project, and also looking at some other county facilities. This was a direction that we recommended to the Highway Committee and the other committees, that is. So it would certainly be the best for the long-term interest of the county. So that's the recommendation before you. We are going to continue to use this product very heavily. It's, we're finding that it's saving the county more money and our other clients, a lot of money in less salt usage. And we will continue to gear up all of our equipment in order to continue to use more and more of this product. From an environmental standpoint, it's very good. From, for the safety of the users of our road system, it's good because we see it cleaning the roadways faster than just regular hard salt. And if, if you don't know what salt brining is, it's just simply the same, the salt that we're currently using and diluted in water.
All right, thank you. Dave Enigle?
Last month, we approved a lease agreement with the state, as I understand it. And at that time, they're like, like Supervisor Engelbert said, there was a request for more understanding what the product, the devices were. I actually went looking at the various county agendas, and I couldn't find any details on the project itself. So a couple of questions I have, looking over the documents presented today, is last month, we approved a lease agreement for this purpose, right?
Burge tanks and everything, yes. And that was a grant of $147,000 that we received from the State Department of Transportation.
In the documents that were submitted this time, there was a statement of purchasing equipment. Well, lease would not be a purchase. It'd be, you know, there are two different purposes. Are we actually purchasing equipment now, or what was the lease agreement that we signed approved last month?
That is, it's a $1 a year lease agreement. That's for, that's for the, the way they structured it in their, in the DOT system. That's how we're going to receive the $147,000 upfront to buy the equipment. They're going to have ownership of the equipment, and we're leasing it from them for a dollar a year.
The, also in the document, it says to house all of the equipment, as discussed at Facilities and Parks. We're not housing any of the tanks still, correct? The three, there were three tanks outlined on the outside of the dock of the.
Right, they're, they're going to be, they, the, the tanks are outside storage.
Okay. So what we're housing is all the equipment that would have been housed in the cement or the precast concrete structure that would have came with it.
Correct.
And how big would this original concrete structure have been?
How big would have the precast structure?
Right.
Well, we were probably looking at two of them. They were about 16 feet wide by eight feet. Eight to, eight to nine feet.
Okay, so that was, that's one of the questions I couldn't convey correctly. At Facilities and Parks, we are taking, we are not really changing the total square footage necessarily of the volume of, of building needed. In other words, they figured that those two containers, precast, would have been large enough for the equipment originally, but rather turning it into a single structure that should effectively make it a more functional installation.
That's correct. And the exact footprint or size of the structure, we've, we've shown the committee some, what our anticipated plans were. But that is a process that will finalize in the design stage. Thank you.
Anybody else? That will go to the voter board. This does require a two-thirds vote because it's a non-budgetary transfer. That has passed on a vote of 17 yes, one nay. I'm sorry, 18 yes? 17 yes, one nay, okay. Resolution 2021, authorization to proceed with Highway and Airport Department facility to start support salt brining operations. Dan? Or Roy?
Yes, I move to approve Resolution 2021-21, authorization to proceed with the Highway and Airport Department facility support salt brining operations. This is just a continuation of what we just passed before, giving us, giving approval to proceed with the construction of the project. So it's ready for the 2021-2022 snow season.
Questions? We'll go to the voter board. There we go. Let's pass on a vote of 17 yes, one nay. Resolution 2021-22, appointment to CGS and CST coordinating committee? Somebody like to make the motion? Thank you.
I can give this quick background on this because it didn't go through Health and Human Services. But again, what happened with this committee is that this committee can actually be structured larger. The minimum size, I believe, is 13 individuals, and we can't have more individuals that can serve on the committee. And they do have someone who is willing and able to serve on the committee that they find of value. So again, the recommendation is to have this person be a part of this committee. And if the person would drop out, or if we lose another member, we're still above our minimums, our minimum of what we need for the committee. But they thought this person would be very valuable, and they're requesting that they be added. So that's why it's before you today.
And this is an administrator appointment, subject to confirmation?
Correct. So it's, it's a my appointment for this committee, but it's confirmation of the board, just so we know who's on the committee itself.
Any questions? By voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
We have, okay. Opposed? Thank you. Ordinances. A mandatory ordinance, recreation of the Door County Fair Housing Ordinance. Dan or Grant, do you want to explain this one?
Sure, I can, I can give an explanation and back me the backup. So when we did our, our application submittal and our process for the Westside School Project that Community Development Block Grant Program, we submitted all of our information. And when they did the review of our application, they reviewed our Fair Housing Act ordinance, or Fair County, I'm sorry, our Door County Fair Housing Ordinance. And there are certain areas that I would guess were out of date. So they responded back to us, saying that we needed to amend our ordinance to make it, I guess, current, to meet the current standards. What you'll see in this version here is it's what we presented at the Administrative Committee. You'll see it's actually very short in terms of its length. And in essence, what you're actually seeing is so that we, we stay compliant. We're actually referring back to actually the statutes itself, rather than putting the statutes into our ordinance. So you see, you know, compliant with set forth in those sections, so forth and so forth. Again, we're doing that because what happened is that when they made those changes, our ordinance didn't have not have those proper references. So instead of copying and pasting in, we're simply saying that we're going to comply with those sections of the standards that were required to meet in any case. So that's why it's before you today in terms of updating that ordinance. And again, it's, was triggered by the review of our application for our Westside School Project with our Community Development Block Grant dollars. I don't know, Grant, if you wanted to add anything else, or?
The only other thing would be that we dispute this ordinance if enacted.
So the Community Development Block Grant Program, if enacted?
Thank you. Any questions? Since it's an ordinance, we've got to go to the voter board. Pass on a vote of 18 yes, zero nay. Ordinance 2021-05, amendment of Chapter 11.05 Door County Code, all terrain vehicles utility, train vehicle reps. Roy?
2021-05 for all train vehicles and utility terrain vehicles.
You want to provide us any explanation?
Yes, thank you. The request came really from the town of Nassauapi, but it really came from the city of Sturgeon Bay because they want to have their certain streets being able to tie into the route system that is provided by Nassauapi and other townships. So this is a very short section of County Road C. It, portions of it is over 35 miles an hour. So that's where, that's why it's number 13, asking to be approved as an ATV, UTV route.
Any questions? We will go to the voter board. Pass on a vote of 17 yea, one nay. We have two special reports left. We'll do the annual report of gifts, grants, and donations first. Starts on page 59 of your packet.
That's just for, that's our annual report. It's always included. This is for records. If there's any questions, I can, I can take those back for assistance FYI.
Any questions on the donations, grants? Next is the WCA Educational Webinar Series, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusivity Review and Future Training Options. So Susan is not here today. She asked me to read a letter concerning this particular issue before we go into our discussion on it. Dear friends, I'm sorry I cannot be with you this morning for the discussion of diversity, equity, inclusivity training. I'm in Green Bay with my husband who's having surgery. This is a topic near and dear to my heart. Though it is extremely complex and difficult issue to deal with for any group, it's very worthwhile use of our time and resources. Our nation is in trouble, largely because we as a people are unwilling to engage in meaningful and civil conversations with those who have different opinions than our own in order to find common ground. If we cannot find the will to work together to compromise, we will not solve the serious problems we all face. Every nation has limited resources. How its leader choose, how its leaders choose to allocate them will determine its fate. We can spend money on solving problems, developing strategies that allow all of our citizens to thrive, and removing roadblocks to assist them so they can succeed. Or rather, we can continue to apply Band-Aids to our problems, pay to support citizens who are unable to successfully provide for themselves, and to supply the treatment and rehabilitation for those who lack success has turned into much costlier problems. Evidence shows that preventative strategies are much less costly than rehabilitation programs. The greater tragedy, tragedy, our nation will not benefit from the contributions that our struggling citizens might have made. Door County is a small part of our struggling nation, but it is as important as any other county and setting an example of the kind of work we would like to see our states and nation leaders tackle. Our goal as the county board is to help our community thrive. Our communities prosper when their citizens have the opportunity to accomplish their goals and meet their needs. When our institutions and laws allow all of us to reap the benefits of our efforts, we all thrive. Taking the time to study our own community and its systems and opportunities is time well spent. I participated in the WCA program and found it to be helpful. It was a good way for us to begin the discussion, but it doesn't come close to accomplishing what needs doing. I urge that we find someone who can help us have an interactive conversation about diversity, equity, inclusion in Door County. Look at the systems and existence here and how we can make the changes and adjustments to help all of our people thrive. This is a conversation that will take courage and humility from all of us. To quote John F. Kennedy, "It's not us. If not us, who? If not now, when?" Take care, Susie. All right, so we had, last time we talked about this, we agreed that we would go through the WCA four-hour training program that they had, that everybody was encouraged to attend. And at the end of that, we would determine if we needed to go further or have additional training, or if we were ready to have admin committee bring the resolution back that was tabled two months ago. So I'll open it up for discussion. Which way would you like to go? Vinnie?
Thank you. I would like to see our county board, I, I appreciate Susie's letter, and I, I agree completely that I think we should put in more time in training with the goal of having some action items specifically added to the draft of the resolution, and then bring that resolution forward. I hope that's a timeline that is shorter versus longer, as a, a request for a resolution like this has been months in the making, if not getting to be, you know, three-fourths of a year here pretty soon. So I have that in mind, but I, I think that the discussion and the training should be an ongoing thing that our county commits to, not just a one-time event, a, a one-time event in preparation of this resolution, but a commitment to ongoing work in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Vinnie. Anybody else? Tara?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with both supervisors and, and the vice chair. I think that, from my perspective, I would either bring the resolution back and then move from there, or, or have more training if we think that we can't bring the resolution back for some reason. Because it has been, it is longer than a couple of months. It's been like four months, I think, since October was when we, when we tabled that discussion. I did do some of the WCA trainings, and I wasn't, I was vaguely impressed. Like, I wasn't really impressed with, with things. One, one thing that I, I wanted to share, and I hope that we can bring this in. I'm doing the Leadership Academy through the Extension Program, and the last presenter there talked about when you're in any sort of elected position, it, it's, it's like a, a chance to always be uncomfortable. And it really felt like it gave me the permission to be uncomfortable all the time. And I really feel like we all should be able to be uncomfortable. And it also gave me the permission to hold other people capable of being uncomfortable and being able to understand that, like, human rights issues, and being able to understand fairness and empathy and knowing right from wrong. And I, I think that, I think that the reason why we're here is because there was a lot of fear in having these uncomfortable conversations. And I would love, I would love to, like, encourage us and, and just to be able to confront those more, I guess. So, so from my perspective, it would be one of two ways, and I feel like Vinnie had the same exact thought, either bringing that resolution back forward or having more. I know a lot of, a lot was gone into picking someone that might be able to, to have some sort of training, and I think that was a great idea as well. So I am totally on board and in favor of either of those, of those solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Morgan?
Um, I just wanted to say, I do, I agree with Susie, everything that she said in her letter. I did the WCA trainings too. They were a great start. They laid good groundwork. But this actually goes right back to Patrick's presentation, that if we want to attract and retain younger people to Door County as workers, as residents, we need to, we need to walk the walk. We can't just go through the motions. We have to do the hard work too, and show them that we're, we're making this the place to do, uh, so I agree with the formalized training as well. In some capacity, as a board, as a board with staff, in some capacity, I think we should take the next step. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Todd?
Yeah, I really weighed long and hard as to whether to push my button on this one or not. Mind being heard?
Yeah, there you go.
Because if you weigh in on this topic, and, you know, you're, you're other than fully supportive or on board with more training and whether a resolution should come to the board or not, you're likely to be labeled. And I'm not exactly going to weigh on that. Either way, I just kind of, my mind wonder, is that really this board's business? And the question is not so much, in my mind, how much more training do we have? I think there are a group of people on this board that have had informal discussions that maybe have not been so much a part of, you know, a, a group that, that feels that this should be strongly pushed forward, that do feel, you know, maybe differently about it, but are somewhat afraid to speak up for, for earning that, that label. But, you know, what am I, what am I really saying is, is, you know, we, we tippy-toed around this for a whole lot of months, and not everybody does think the same. And that's maybe an unfortunate thing, but, you know, as, as it relates to Door County, as it relates to Sturgeon Bay, and as it relates to, you know, the business that we're, we're here to do, I, I'm of the opinion, we're spending a lot of time talking about something here that, I don't know that it, I don't know that it has a, a lot of meaning, I guess. And, or I shouldn't say meaning, that's the wrong word. Again, that's very difficult to speak on this because you'll be labeled. But I, I just, I, I just feel that we're, you know, moving the puck back and forth on this thing. I, I'm of the opinion that we, we've done the training, those that have taken the training have taken it, and, and we should debate whether or not this resolution belongs on, on the floor, and it's a, it's a up or it's a down. I mean, obviously, there's some counties that have voted to adopt it, and there's some that hasn't. And I hope, because I'm certain this probably will not be a unanimous vote one way or another, we as a county board can continue to work together moving forward. Because there are some very, very, very strong feelings that, and I've witnessed it and I've seen it, that if you're either on this, or you're, you're, you're going to be labeled and holistically against it. So that's, that's my opinion. that if you're either on this or you're, you're, you're going to be labeled and holistically against it. So that's, that's my opinion. And, and thank you for the chance to speak.
Right, thank you. Vinnie?
Thank you. I feel it's, this question and this topic right now on this agenda is very confusing for people to make up their mind about one way or the other. Not how they morally or emotionally feel, I don't mean that, but I mean, what are we considering? Like, are we, is this now back to the $4,000 training specifically? Is it back to the concept of training in general? Is it bringing the resolution to the next county board meeting? I, I think we don't know what the agenda item is right now. At least I am not clear on it. If it's, if it's the formalized training, then I would, you know, make a resolution to do that, or to, you know, say that we should do that. But if we're just discussing in general, I think we're kind of a little bit going down a slippery slope of what we feel about the topic when maybe some people are not wanting to do it for budgetary reasons and others are personal reasons. So I could just use some clarity if, if people have that.
I guess I will try and clarify. I'm the one who asked that this be tabled several months ago. And my intent in asking to table it was not to stuff it, not to not bring it forward, but it was, I felt it was important enough to have the discussion and to have at least some minimal training on it, so people understood what we were up against and what we were talking about. And I thought that by going through the diversity training and doing the WCA, that maybe it would open up our minds and begin for us as a county board to look at what we needed to do within our county to provide our constituents anything having to do with, with that particular resolution. And that was my intent behind it. I think it's beginning to work. We're having some conversation whether it's uncomfortable or not. We've had some training on it. And I guess I would, I would, next month, I would ask the Administrative Committee to, to bring the resolution back up. Table and bring it back to the county board, and let the county board at that time have their vote on it and decide what, if anything, they wanted to do going forward. But I, I personally would like to see if, within that resolution, whether it passes or not, that we need to continue to work towards our diversity, our equity, and our, our training within the county itself. We have a couple of people over in Human Services that are focusing on this, and I think we need to focus on what we're trying to do as a county in this particular area. And that was my intent in tabling at that time. Hopefully, I've accomplished that. Some people were angry that I did that. Some people were happy I did that. But the point was to have, to be, at least begin to have the conversation uncomfortable or not. So if I've accomplished that, I did what I set out to do four months ago. So I'll take it to admin next month, and we'll, we'll bring it back, and we'll go from there and take the next step.
Just one more closing, just because maybe sometimes you don't come across as clearly as, as you had, so, as you would, you would have chose to. So I, I don't think it's the intent of any of this training to get all 21 supervisors thinking the same way, because the definition of diversity is bringing 21 people who come to the county board that think about things in a different way. It doesn't make you racist, doesn't make you big, it doesn't make you any of that stuff. I think the real question for many of the people in the county, on the county board, on both sides, are whether or not there's a huge problem in Door County that causes us to bring a resolution and to approve a resolution. So that's what I'm trying to say. Okay?
Understood. Roy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm in complete agreement with you. Yesterday, we had some very good points from La Crosse County, and I hope that when you bring it to the admin committee, that you have some recommendations as far, should there be a committee on DEI? Or should there be, should there be a follow-up group? At least put, give some future things, not just one resolution talking about one subject, but put a little bit more meat into it, but we can follow up with it.
Okay, thank you. Roy? Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so I, I've been thinking about this a lot as your administrator, what's, what's the best way to go on? I think there are some opportunities that I thought the WCA training was actually excellent in terms of, I guess, laying some groundwork for us and building some common ground, because I do have an opportunity to speak with many of you and get your input. And I think we do have some areas of some definitely, some common ground that we can focus on. And I think if we break it apart a little bit, I think we can accomplish that. I think there's our, there are individuals, as Supervisor Kuo mentioned, that, you know, we're, we're a small piece of the puzzle in the greater discussion of what's going on within our state and in our nation. And it's up to the county board to decide if they want to make a statement in regards to that global picture, right? Do we want to make a, a statement in terms of when you see that resolution that's been put together by other, when we first started, when that resolution came forward as a model from WCA, a lot of that took, in my mind, the global perspective of that issue. But now, as you went through the training at WCA, I think almost three of the four sessions actually recommended that, especially for a place like Door County where you may not have a lot of diversity in terms of individuals of different ethnicities, maybe that's not the best place to start to build that commonality. You should be, we should be looking at our data to find out where do we have our areas of inequities, whether it's individuals of certain age classes or income levels, that type of thing. And I think when I spoke with most of the county board members, I think there's a lot of consensus that that is a really good place for us to start in terms of that discussion. Where are we, where are we, where are we missing in mark, in our own performance in terms of a county? And I think that came across at least through the last three sessions of that being a good place to start. So in my mind, I think the, when it goes back to the admin, I think that's one of the discussions that can take place at admin, is what's the focus of that resolution? But then as an organization, I think, I look at it as twofold, is what do we want to do as an organization? And I think we've taken some significant steps in terms of training. I think two of the sessions talked about, you know, a great place to start is within Human Services. We had that presentation last month, that Human Services is actually going through that training. We're having Department Day training on Thursday on this topic, and we'll continue to push that training through the organization. So I think in some ways, from an organizational standpoint, we have a ways to go, but we are, we're moving forward in that, and we can build that into our traditional training programs that we offer our employees. So then the other part of the question is, you know, do we go back to that $4,000 training? Or do we go through this process? And I guess, you know, going back to Vinnie's point, what are we actually talking about today? Yeah, do we want to schedule that, that, that additional training? I guess my opinion back to you would be, it's up to you and your decision. But I think to say right now, let's schedule that training, I, I don't think accomplishes is, not that it's not a good discussion, but I don't think it moves us on the mark of having that discussion where we should focus. So I guess my recommendation would be is that while it could be something we target further down the line, once we get through some of these items we identify as issues in Door County, I think you're better off focusing some of those resources and trying to understand what our issues are, whether it is age, whether it is income-based, whether it is childhood poverty, whether it is childcare. Those types of things, I think, would be more, better done for us to gather that research, working through Human Services, to try to get that understanding, rather than, again, and, and again, there's other, I'm not saying that there's other training opportunities, for example, United Way has the 21-day or 21-week challenge that each of us as individuals can sign up for, but I'm talking about expending an additional money towards bringing in another speaker, eight-hour series. I guess I, if you just want to get my opinion, I think right now, that's not, not maybe the best path for, at this point, like, for this meeting today. Three months from now, once we have more discussions, or we, or six months from now, when we have some of those other items come up, do we bring it back? And that's an area we want to target, or through the budget process, we want to target? Yes, let's have that discussion, but I guess if you want to get off the mark today, I think the strategy you laid out far as having, going back to admin, then have it come to the county board in terms of the resolution, but in terms of other future training, I guess I'd hold off until we know more of what we're trying to accomplish.
Dan?
Yes. I'll make a motion to return it to the admin committee to come back with a, a road of which we should follow.
Grant, can we take motions?
What?
I'm, I'm asking Grant a question.
Yeah, I think we can make a motion to refer.
Would you repeat your motion, Dan?
Well, to refer back to, to admin committee for a road to follow, pretty much.
I think that's what we would do, that would be the plan, start with.
Yeah.
Is there a second on Dan's motion? And here's the discussion on his motion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, Dan. Megan?
Thank you. I guess this could have been discussion under that motion, so I, should I, it's on that same topic. May I go ahead? Okay. I, what I hear a lot of in our community regarding the topics of equity and unity and racism are, lead me to believe that there's a, a strong belief by some that there is not an issue or that this is not a large issue here. And I believe that would be incorrect. Referencing back to Susie's letter, there are a lot of things that we can focus on. There are other issues that we can put money and energy into. However, I would argue that as a county and as a board, to answer whether or not it is appropriate or needed for us to be putting energy and money into learning more about this topic and actually having, fostering these conversations, because I don't, I don't, that's not happening yet. Those conversations in this group are not happening yet. My argument for that would be that in order for us to do our job, in order for, for us to effectively quote-unquote, run this county, and in any business, we need to be aware of our blind spots. That, that's a huge part of any, of any group, of any business, of, of running any sort of government entity. We need to be aware of our blind spots. And quite frankly, we are not a diverse county board. Not in any way, shape, or form. Yes, we have different ways of thinking about things, but we are not diverse. So this is a huge blind spot for us. And we have the opportunity to address that blind spot and have that happen in a safe space where people aren't afraid of being labeled or called names. They can, they can just share where they are at and what their current level of understanding is or is not, and really have an open mind to be able to fill in some of those blind spots. So we can better govern this county while setting an example for the rest of the state and the rest of the nation. Yes, we are just a tiny little piece. But a lot of rural areas are similar to us, many rural areas are similar to us. And I think it's a really important thing to be extremely proactive, and that would include training. That would include this resolution. That would include many actionable items. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Lundall hit on, I think, a, you know, critical understanding for us here today at this juncture, to recognize what are those actionable items? It's not going to be just one thing. You know, passing a resolution is great, and there's pros and cons about that. We, we need to really think about what is that list of actionable items and what's the timeline? You know, ignoring it or sweeping it under the rug, or acting like, oh, things are fine here, we're good. That's an ignorant position. And anybody who feels like they're afraid to be labeled, that's, that's an invitation to get involved. The training that WCA provided was good, it was a good start. I don't feel that they really got into enough of the history to give a good understanding. I kind of felt like WCA, the horse was already kind of already out of the gate, or they assumed like, hey, you live in Milwaukee County, you've already been dealing with this. This is new for us. We've got to take a step back. We need that training, we need that history, we need that basic understanding. We need to involve groups like Help and these other, Just Door County, these other organizations. And how we do that, I mean, there's, there's definitely potential multiple paths forward, but I think, again, the important thing is for us here as we move forward with this, is to decide which those things are we going to focus on. I think there's enough of us, enough of us who have, have been putting in the time and have been putting ourselves in those uncomfortable places to know that it's, A, not that hard, and B, the point is, and, and the, and the focus always needs to be that we stay in community. So that discomfort is kind of the point. We're all supposed to feel uncomfortable. I'm uncomfortable right now. And I've been uncomfortable participating in the multiple seminars I've been participating in, listening to the multiple podcasts and the different things that I've been reading and learning about, about the disparities in our country and the programs I've watched and, and the things that I've been reading about. I mean, we just, we have to just keep at it. And so I think we need to think about, we've, we've already have one res, or we already made one motion, and we're going to get that resolution back to admin, admin's going to look at it and bring it back. Okay, that's one thing, and that's sort of, we've got a goal and a, and a timeline, basically. So for training and our own education, we need more training, and so then are we going to rely on local groups coming in? I still think Mohammed Bey from NWTC is our best option. That was an extremely inexpensive offer that they made to us. He can help us dive into the history, help us understand, and, and really tailor it for our needs and our purpose. I think Door County needs to be a leader. You know, we, we are an extremely white county, and guess what? There's a lot of white counties in Wisconsin. We also happen to be a fairly open-minded county, and I think we're more open-minded than a lot of counties. And so in that regard, we can be leaders in the county on this issue and, and basically show the other 72 that we can handle this. We, we can put our, our big boy pants on, our big girl pants on, and get uncomfortable. That's, that's an important thing for us to tackle. One thing that I wanted to comment on, you know, the administrator was, was saying, well, let's push off this training and let's gather more data. How much more data do we need? I mean, my goodness, 400 years of, of this and we'd need more data? I mean, give me a break. You know, who, who is collecting the data on the black kids that were working at the counters at, at restaurants this summer who were called nigger? Or who were, who's collecting the data on those brown-skinned people who are skipped on their tips this summer, this past summer, because they're brown-skinned? That's happening in Door County, and if you don't know it, you got to get involved with the people who are actually doing the work. Right? We have brown and black-skinned people in this county, and Asian people in this county who are regularly called names and treated poorly because of racism. That's real, and it happens here all the time. If you don't see it, you need to open your eyes, and that's the discomfort. Let's get in, let's roll up our sleeves. Let's get some training and let's continue. Let's, let's come up with our two or three action items. One is the resolution that's going to, or the, that's going to go to admin. Great. Let's talk about our next step for us, so that we can be more proactive and more intelligent about how we move forward, so that we can not only help ourselves and our families and our communities, but also to be a leader in the state of Wisconsin. Thank you very much.
Nissa?
Um, thank you. Just to add a little bit what Megan and Bob said. You know, passing a resolution is great, but if there's nothing behind it, then it's just words. Just a few years ago, maybe about a year after I moved back to the county, I was bartending at, at a one restaurant, and I had a customer who was not a local tell me it was so nice to see people who look like us around the area, unlike other places, and then winked at me. I was, needless to say, offended because I have family of all backgrounds. So I asked her to clarify and played stupid until she got uncomfortable and finished her drink and left. So I, I can understand where people in the service industry have had issues over the past few years, because someone assumed that I'd be okay with a stupid comment. And it was a stupid comment. It was a horrible comment. I think there, we can pass a resolution saying, look, we need to fix this, but we need to also actually work on fixing it. Not just say we pass something so it makes us look good to any newspapers or anyone watching who might think, oh, look, they care about others. We need to do more than just pass something generic, and we need to pass things that actually help. generic, and we need to pass things that actually help people. And that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Nissa. Anybody else? Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, because Nissa made a really good point. You know, we may feel like we're fine here, and we may actually be doing pretty good. But the people that come here and visit in the summertime, we have no control over who they are. And there's a lot of them that are flat-out bald-faced racists. And that's what I was trying to get at my point. Like, they come here, and they come to Vacationland, and they shut their brains off, and they don't really care about anything. And they certainly, you know, I mean, there's been so many incidences this, this past summer of angry white people getting in other people's faces. I mean, there were a lot of incidents this last summer of racism. And again, if, if, you know, if you didn't see it or don't want to hear it, great, keep your head in the sand. But I'm telling you, it's real. It's on the streets. It's in, on the streets of Bailey's Harbor, it's on the streets of Sister Bay, and it's in the restaurants, and it's in our, it's in our service industry. Those people took the brunt of a lot of white anger this summer, this past summer. And that's not going away. So again, it, you know, it may not be our problem per se, but guess what? We're stuck of, as a, we're a tourist destination, we can't change that. Those people come here and bring that racism with them. So that makes it harder for us. We've got even more work to do to kind of figure out how to make this place more welcoming. So I guess that's another just aspect. Thank you, Nissa, for helping me clarify that point.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, we're going to take these last two questions, and then we're going to move on. Megan?
Thank you. I appreciate this string, because something else just popped up for me as well. While I was working with customers this past year especially, but it's happened prior to that, I've had so many people of color ask me where it's safe for them to go, where, where it's safe for people like them to go. Which bars are safe? Which restaurants? Where should people like them go? They ask me that. And heck, yeah, we're a tourist county, and we want to be a tourist county, I believe, for everyone. And we want that inclusivity. So while you're thinking about all this, think about our guests coming here and asking their bartender or their shopkeep where it's safe for them to go, because that happened a lot this year.
Thank you, Megan. Vinnie?
Thank you. I think it's important to remember to not get hung up on the words. And remember, diversity, equity, and inclusion is a broad range of topics. If, for some of you, if that lands with how are elders treated in the community? What's the equity in gender in our community? What's the equity in race? You can't separate one out and not do the others. That's a, that's a package. So you can't say no to one and not be saying no to the others. I think that's a really important point to remember. And a couple of board members contacted me with their thoughts on that, that they really felt something else may be more important. But these aren't separate. This is the same. Diversity, equity, inclusion is all of that. So I, I think it's an important piece to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Vinnie. Okay. Any oral committee reports? Any committee minutes to be reviewed? Bob?
I have an oral committee report. Just wanted to give everyone a little brief heads-up on the Legislative Committee. We are working on, we've met a couple times, discussing a land acknowledgement. There are also a slew of water issues being talked about, and also stewardship funding. So these are three topics that will be discussed further, further at the next Legislative Committee meeting. In case you're interested, tune in. Thank you.
Review vouchers, claims, and bills. Announcements. The next regular county board meeting will be March 23 at 9:00 AM, not 10:00 AM. We're going to go back to the 9:00 AM start. The meeting for DM code is 223.
Can I just make two other quick announcements?
Sure.
Just a reminder for the WCA conference, that we will have it running here in the county boardroom. If you'd like to attend, if you're not going to attend here, you need to make sure that you're registered. This is another quick announcement. The, Wayne had sent out an email. I'll make sure it's part of the Friday communications, but we are replacing the front doors in front. So when you come to meetings, there'll be about three days where the front entrance, you'll have to use the door, either on this side or up by Jill. Just want to make sure you're aware of that. And then the other one is, I will also, I'm working with the chairman in terms of, there's been interest in terms of touring some of our facilities, such as the Highway Shop, the Justice Centers. For those that are new to the county board that may have not done that, I'll be working on putting that together. But if you are interested in participating in something like that, if you contact Lori or myself and let me know, I can at least get a, a gauge of interest of those who might want to take part of that tour. Thank you.
Biz?
It is the first and second of March. I'm sorry, second and third, sorry. Second and third, Tuesday, Wednesday, March. They start at 8:30 in the morning, and I believe they finish at 11:30. For those that want to do it here, yes, you can do it through.
You can also do it online via Zoom. Meeting for DM code 223. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Interesting meeting. I, I will say that. This was interesting. A lot of good discussion. If there's no further business being transacted, though, I'd like to make a motion we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.